This conference will now be recorded.
That's a good one. We'll call the regular council meeting of April 1st, 2024 to order. Anna, will you call the roll?
Mayor Johnson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kane?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Yes.
And Councilmember Walchek?
Here.
Please rise. To the diligence flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, will do approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Yes.
And Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
I'll shake your hand.
Are there any modifications to the agenda this evening?
None.
Okay, approval of the minutes. Any questions or concerns with the minutes from regular enclosed session of March 18th, 2024? Nope. Moving on to public comment, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during council, during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and then any online comments will be accepted after the in-person comments are completed. All comments should be directed to the council and not to the audience. Thank you. Anyone?
Good evening. Kevin Ginter, 390 South Lawn, Alpena, Michigan. Two things. One real quick is when I spoke to most of you about the position on the city council, one of my items, item number two, was the end of the water sewer litigation. I think the city's in the driver's seat, and although I'd like to see a quick, is that a good word to use right now? A quick resolution to the, to the issue. I don't think it's anything the city has to do anything but stand on its position. I'm sure that they've held for many years. The second thing is, um, a couple of things all rolled into one. That is, I went to a couple of funerals, wakes, open house type things at Bannon Funeral Home, and I was kind of surprised or shocked to notice multiple sets of burnout marks in both in front of the funeral home. And if I was a teenager, maybe it would be a nice donut, right in the intersection. And I think we spent a lot of time and money on beautifying the city and making sure things are taken care of with the mural projects and the flower weekends and stuff like that. And then my, my multi-part to this is that I guess there was quite a crowd gathering with these people doing these antics that, for their friend, I guess, that had recently died in a high-speed auto accident, and I don't know the reason for that accident. But so you have the safety issue and any tickets or any violations that were possibly handed out. My understanding was that there were multiple minutes of this activity going on with, without putting it to an end. And then, quite frankly, I start out with the way it makes the city look and ultimately a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
You, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Anyone else?
Chad Ash, 529 Forest Hill Drive, Alpena. The comments that I wouldn't like to make, because I've had several people, and first of all, I want to thank Tim and Tim and the DPW for the eliminating the old foundation from this Evergreen Cemetery fence line. It really looks nice. A few years ago, when they took the fence down, and I don't remember how long that has been, it's been four or five, probably. They raised the question of when are they going to erect a new one? So now I have had many people, they think that I own the cemetery, or they think that I run the cemetery or something, but I'm the one that they talk to about the cemetery many times. The, the new dirt looks very nice. I assume there's going to be grass growing very quickly. But now the question that I have had many, many times is when is the new fence going to be erected? So I don't know if the city has put together a committee, if the city is ready to pull the trigger on having a fence erected. It's something that we need to get out into the public if we're going to do it. If we're looking for a committee, I would love to be able to be on that committee to get somebody to do that. I believe I've looked into the, the laws of cemeteries a little bit on perpetual care monies. That is definitely something that monies that the city has been setting on for a number of years can be used for those dollars, is the way I understand the law. I can definitely clarify that much closer or much better. There's a couple of other issues at the cemetery that needs to be addressed over the next several years. The mausoleum there is, is looking in pretty rough shape. We need to care for that also. So I think that we need, it's time to set up a committee, somewhat of an ad hoc for the fence for sure, but some sort of a friends of the cemetery committee that can consult of the DPW, obviously, because they're the ones with the machines. And then I know there's a couple of other citizens in the area that have a very high interest in the cemetery and want to see it, that it's taken care of. Tim and Tim are doing an excellent job. They, I know the, the rest of the DPW helped rip out, but they recalled something else a couple of days later, and Tim and Tim got stuck leveling it off, and it really looks nice. And then I throw a grave digging in there in the middle of it, and it throws a wrench and all of that stuff. But I just wanted to comment that I am getting many people asking. I don't have an answer. I'd love to be able to say it's being worked on, but I, I hope that the city does have a plan for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Any other comments? Online? Okay, we have a public hearing, so we'll move on to consent agenda. An amount of $268,308 and eight cents and authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Swite to sign the warrant. B, receive and file the 2023 annual monitoring agreements report, and there's two of them. C, mayoral appointment of Matt Walla Gore to the authority for brownfield redevelopment for a three-year term expiring on April 1st, 2027. D, reappointment of Steve Wilson to the Harbor Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring on April 1st, 2027. And E, council reappointment of Julie Kroneak to the retirement board for a two-year term expiring on April 1st, 2026.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Proton Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. So we're moving to 10, and we have proclamation tonight for the Child Abuse Prevention Month. So as soon as I'm done reading this, we can come up for a picture, so you can have that for advertising, and the paper will hopefully take it to get it in there. Okay. So whereas the city of Alpena applauds the Exchange Club of Alpena and Alpena Child Abuse and Noclect Can team for their dedicated work in the preservation of child abuse in our community, and whereas the city of Alpena commends the Exchange Club of Alpena and the Alpena Can team for their tireless promotion of ongoing programs in our community which are designed to help prevent child abuse, and whereas the city of Alpena stands firmly on the side of prevention, prevention of any type of abuse and believes no child should endure verbal, emotional, or physical abuse for any reason, and whereas the National Exchange Club adopted the prevention of child abuse and its national project in 1979 in response to a request by the National President, who, as a physician, noticed an increase in the, in abuse cases in the medical, in his medical practice, and the Alpena Can team formed in 1978 and incorporated in 1985 as a nonprofit organization to assure all children in Alpena and Prescott counties live in an environment free of abuse and neglect. Whereas April has been designated as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the city of Alpena supports and encourages all residents of the community leaders to wear blue in April in observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Now, therefore, I, Cindy Johnson, Mayor of the City of Alpena, City of Alpena, Michigan, hereby proclaim the month of April to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Alpena in recognition of our commitment to healthy, happy, help, healthy, happy children, and to help eradicate child abuse in our community, and to support the efforts of the Exchange Club of Alpena and the Alpena Can team and all others who observe this important cost and their mission to bring awareness of the tragic problem to the forefront and to help make our community a stronger and more loving city where children will be able to grow and thrive without fear of harm. So.
Got my phone.
We are up to 12, and we have the Wildlife Sanctuary Information Report and Budget Request. Lisa Cruz, Board Chair, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, so my name is Lisa Cruz. I'm the newly elected Alpena Wildlife Sanctuary Board Chair. I started January of this year of 2024. I've been on the Alpena Wildlife Sanctuary Board since January of 2023. So you should have received our annual report along with our budget request. I'm not going to read through the annual report, but I do want to go over kind of the vision for 2024. And the vision for 2024 is that we're really going to be looking at the, it's currently called the Island Park Management Plan, but it's really going to be the Alpena Wildlife Sanctuary Management Plan. It's going to be all encompassing of Island Park and the sanctuary as a whole. And that management plan is going to cover all of our different operations and management of the sanctuary. And that plan is going to be comprehensive, and it's going to be looking at all of our different things, educational, educational, volunteers, social media, and artists in residency and other programs like that. Is there any questions on kind of the management plan or the vision for 2024? It's really a rebuilding and a reassessment or reevaluation.
I don't have.
I don't have any.
Okay, so for the budget, you'll see that we tried to line item it out as best as we could. $7,600 total. A lot of it is our continual of operations for our native and invasive species management. A new budget item you might have noticed is for the wood chips. We used to receive free wood chips from DPI, but that's no longer an option. So then we'll be requesting funds for portrayal maintenance in the future for those wood chips. That's the 550. And then you'll see some of the other programming items that we have requested over the years. So that's our total budget for the upcoming year. So any questions on the budget? All right. Thank you.
No one has any questions? I, I do.
Yeah, no, no problem.
The question box. Does the city have wood chips?
I know that Shamin has purchased some.
She purchased them. We don't chip. Okay. I thought we had chipped our own, but no. Okay.
Yeah, I think there was, to my knowledge, there is a wood chip pile set aside, but we didn't necessarily want to dip into that, that pile, since the island park does require a large amount of wood chips to upkeep the trails and prevent the soil erosion. So we wanted to make sure we had a designated fund for the chips.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So does anyone else have any questions, concerns? So entertain a motion to receive and file.
I move we receive and file the report from the Alpena Wildlife Sanctuary Board.
I'll support.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
And we're new business, A Northeast Michigan Materials Management Authority, 2024 request for Cleanup Day and Electronics Day. And I am chair, I am vice-chair of that committee. I sent out the request that you all have in your packet. Cleanup Day is the first Saturday in May, and Electronics Day is the first Saturday in June. These, these are programs have been highly successful in keeping, you know, our community clean, giving people a place to bring items that they normally wouldn't know where to take. But we don't fund this out of recycling, because it's not, it can't come out of our recycling funds. A lot of this will end up in the trash. We try to recycle what we can. We capture what metals we can. But these are two really expensive days that we hold, and we need to fund them. The city has been funding this for the last few years. The funding request in the letter kind of tells you what most people give, and we have to, Rickson and I would probably go to the county to, to request from them as well, because they've asked us to. But the letter usually serves as the request to the townships as well. So anything that anyone can give us to fund these programs so we can keep it going is helpful. We do have a tire grant, and this year we have two cars that are paid for, and then Wholesome has been helping us bring trailers, and they take tires away as well. You'd be surprised how many tires are in this community.
I would not be surprised. I was shocked at one year.
So, yes. So we appreciate that. And then on Electronics Day, we have a little bit of our grant left from last year that helps with that. But all I can say is between these two events, they usually run between $30,000 and $35,000.
I have some additional information. Councilman Noah had asked me who had donated in the past, or last year. So Alpena County, $5,000, City of Alpena, $5,000, Charter Township of Alpena, $5,000, Green and Wilson Township, both for $1,000, Osanique Township, $2,000, Long Rapids Township, $500, Maple Ridge Township, $500, and Wellington Township, $200. So everyone gives a little bit. We also had some donations, one from Alpena Mark for $200, and then there was that grant from the Community Foundation, as well as a donation from ITC for $2,500. So that all goes to support Cleanup Day.
And I wrote a grant last year, and the Community Foundation gave us $3,000 to support Cleanup Day. So we're out looking for business sponsors again this year to make this happen. But so we're asking everyone to keep this in their budget, because without it, we can't do it. So the request.
Fantastic. Thank you for all your work on that. That's good, because you can definitely tell that this has made a difference. One of the other questions that I've been asked in the past, and I'm so sorry, Rachel, I forgot, was is there any, they have to bring the items to there. Is there anyone that would help assist, anyone who's got items that they would like to get rid of, but doesn't have a way to transport them?
In the past, we had a trailer, like if somebody needed something that had no way to get it to us. We had the trailer up until this year to run out and grab those items and get them to Cleanup Day. We don't have a trailer anymore. So I'm not sure how we can make that happen. My hope is that neighbors help neighbors. Yeah.
I think some people can contact their township supervisors as well, and they might be able to make arrangements.
Yes, and they've done that in the past, too. The supervisors will come in with trailers full of stuff from their community. So there are ways to get it there.
I mean, it's, it's made a huge impact on the community, because, you know, when we were growing up here, you would see refrigerators on the side of roads and so on. And now that has mostly been eliminated, not completely, but, you know, it's made a big impact. So all right. No other questions, ma'am?
Anyone else?
I do. How is this, is this advertised, like in the paper or on the news or?
Yes, we try to get it out. Newspaper, we depend on the media to help us get it out. We are currently working on our flyers for this year. So as soon as we get those done, we put it on our website. It'll be on the county website. Any township who has a website, Facebook, they slap them on their doors. We get it out the very best we can, so people know.
Is there, and then has there ever been any talk about budgeting for, like sending in the mail or anything? Or is that just probably going to be, that'd be outrageous, I'm sure.
When we, if we ever send out mailings, and sometimes we do with a tax bill, if we do that, we always include this day along with recycling information, so that people know. It is also if you go to Alpena Recycling and you go to our site that's on NemCog, it's, it's on there. All of the Cleanup Days are on there. And any information you need for recycling is on there. We, we try really hard to get the information out.
And we've kept it on the same day.
On the same day?
Each year. So that helps just to kind of let people know to expect it.
Right.
And on Cleanup Day, and Cleanup Day is like white goods, furniture, you know, metal things, all of those sorts of things that you have. We hand out flyers then for Electronic Day, when they're going through the line. We give them that information while they're in line, so they know. So.
Electronics is more of your television, and the white goods would be like dehumidifiers.
Dehumidifiers, washers, dryers, refrigerators, take mattresses, all of that on Cleanup Day is like household stuff. Electronics is completely separate. So if you bring us a TV on Cleanup Day, we're going to tell you to bring it back the next, because we can't, we can't possibly take it that day.
Okay.
Because on Electronics Day, we have those trailers there and those businesses that take it that day.
Okay, that's good information to have as well. So that's been a point of confusion for even myself in the past.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not going to wring a TV in paper.
I do have a question for you regarding what happens to the things that get cleaned up on these days. I was just asked, for example, what happens to the electronics, the white goods, et cetera?
So on Cleanup Day, anything that we can recycle, so we bring our metal bin there, so we dump all of the metal in the metal bin. Mattresses, we send to a facility that recycles them. So they'll take the wood inside the mattresses from the frames, they shred them out, they end up in your garden. The springs, anything that they can recycle from those mattresses, they recycle. A lot of times, people bring us things that simply have to go in the garbage, that we have no other choice. So then we have the garbage bins there for that. But anything that we can capture and recycle, we do. We do not take hazmat on those days. So if you have paint, oil, batteries, those sorts of things, we, we cannot take them on that day. That's, those have to be taken at the facility. There's protocol for taking those in. So but outside of that, there's very little, unless you're going to bring us a boat, we're not taking a boat on cleanup day. Well, people have tried.
Okay.
But most anything that you have on Cleanup Day that, you know, you don't know what to do with furniture, all of that you can bring to us. We are going to partner with Habitat this year, because they came through last year with some things that they had, and they were kind of dismayed to see some, especially the wooden furniture that was being tossed. They would like it. So we're hoping that they bring a truck there and grab some of that stuff, and then it helps the cost of us having to dispose of it.
Great. Thank you.
Talking about paint, that would be the, the current place you have down 32, and you could take it in on like Saturdays or something like that.
There's certain, and we haven't started hazmat collection, collection for the year yet, but that starts in about two months, I think. And I'd have to look. But we collect hazmat through the summer, and there are certain dates, and it's usually Wednesday and I think Saturday, certain hazmats on certain days. And that's all listed on the website at NemCog, too, what you can bring.
Okay, the wife is bugging me about getting the 35 cans out of the basement. So.
Yeah.
If anyone is interested, we had last year 257 vehicles come through, which is pretty substantial. Most of them from this past year were from the Charter Township at 128, but we had 60 vehicles come through from the city. And I think sometimes those numbers are a little bit off, because people don't really know exactly where they're coming from as far as jurisdiction wise. But it's a good, it's a busy event.
It is. Never thought it'd be that high.
Yep.
Very busy.
And the hours for those days, ma'am?
The hours for those days, they start lining up well before 8 o'clock, but we actually start at 8. If we can start before then, if everyone's ready to go, we do, so we can move that line, 8 to 1. If you're in line at 1 o'clock, we will take your stop.
And there's always a need for volunteers, right?
And there is a need for volunteers. So if there's any service groups out there, any, any individual who would like to come and help on either one of those days, we could use it. Yeah.
Is there a banner that goes up when you enter, like by the hospital? You know, sometimes there's a banner?
No, we, we haven't put a banner up there, but we are going to, Nathan Skibby's supposed to be working on getting banners that we can even put at our bins, so that people know Cleanup Day, so it's there when they're recycling. Oh.
I just think there's, might be a lot of people who would do it, but they have to, you have to be proactive enough yourself to research where, you know, you have to Google, you know, where do I dispose of this, for it to even prompt getting to this website. So if you don't know it exists, you know, there's no intuitive measure to do it unless you have that inside yourself to do it, you know. So.
We'll get better and better at the advertising. It's just, it's, it's all volunteer. So we definitely just, we do what we can.
Yeah, it's just such a great program.
But I've thought about a banner across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll have to talk to Steve about that.
Location, we used to be, well, we used to do it at our facility. We don't do that anymore. It's, it's too muddy and it's too congested. You can't get in and out. It's, it was a mess. We transitioned to the fairgrounds for a couple of years, which gave us more room, and sometimes it worked well, unless they were having events. And that happened where we had the horse show and a couple other events, so we were stuck to one little section, and then traffic lined up out onto 11th Avenue, and we were backing up everything. So we are now at the Ice Arena. So we are at Northern Lights Parking Lot, and it works out really well. So that's, that's our location. So if anyone asks, we'll do that.
Great information.
Other question?
Thank you.
Motion to receive and file?
Oh, yes. I'd like to move that we receive and file the finance, the request for financial allocation for the cleanup?
Yes.
Yes.
Cleanup Day.
Cleanup Day on May Saturday, first Saturday in May, and first Saturday in June 2024.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And now we're up to B, Cardiac Monitor and Power Cut Service Agreement, and Chief Rob Edmonds is here to present.
Good evening. Earlier this year, the city of Alpena and County of Alpena revised the ambulance agreement through an amendment, which outlined some allowable changes for modified and improved services to the community. One of these changes was to reimburse the city for annual maintenance of the LifePac cardiac monitors and Stryker power-load cotton lift systems used on the rigs up to $31,000 per year. This essential annual service and maintenance helps to ensure that our equipment is properly functioning, any software updates are made, and any needed service or repairs are performed to reduce the possibility of malfunction or failure in patient care delivery. Each of these pieces of equipment are high-use items and utilized on every patient contact made. Up until now, we have not had annual service or maintenance performed unless a problem was identified or a repair was needed. I believe having this service completed annually is good practice and helps reduce our liability and risk of malfunction or failure in performing patient care activities. This is a sole source vendor, as Stryker Medical is the owner-vendor of both the LifePac cardiac monitors and Stryker power-load cot lift systems. I'm requesting that council approve Mayor Johnson to sign into a five-year service agreement with Stryker for the preventative annual maintenance of the LifePac cardiac monitors and Stryker power-load cot lift systems as attached in the amount of $30,999.23 per year. This is a reimbursable expense by Alpena County each year, and it was. This is a reimbursable expense by Alpena County each year, and it was included in the ambulance amendment that we did. We signed into an agreement with the county.
Edmonds, I have to applaud you for being proactive. This is excellent.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone have questions?
No, this makes perfect sense.
I do.
Yes.
What is being used then currently? I mean, is this just to extend the five-year service that already it's like due to expire? Or is this an entirely new?
Entirely new. Yeah, we've never had one before. So basically, when something broke, we recently had a blood pressure component of the cardiac monitor fail. It was $2,300 to get fixed. If we'd had the agreement, it would have been a free repair under the agreement. So this is totally brand new for us.
And does that happen often where things fail and the cost would be?
And it's not budgeted.
Right.
Okay. So this way it allows us to budget for it because it's basically just pastor money because the county reimburses us for that annual contract. So.
So what what's being what was being done in the past for services and maintenance of this equipment?
We're just doing it in-house.
Oh, okay.
And if we had something that we couldn't repair or something that was beyond our capabilities, you called the vendor, and then they sent somebody up at a very high rate for repairs.
And then?
Okay, all right, all right.
I'm a very inquisitive person, I guess. So when it comes to preventative maintenance, I mean, would you know that this equipment was faulty before you go to use it? Or would you just go use and go, oh?
You may go to use it, and it's not operating effectively at the time. So obviously, we every day that we check our rigs out, we check the cardiac monitors. There's a test that's done on it. Same with the power cuts. So it's just things that are wearing as they go. Plus with cardiac monitors, they when they do a service and maintenance on them, they do any upgrades to them as far as any of the parameters for the equipment itself. So.
Okay. I think so.
Questions? They were good questions. A motion?
I'll motion. I'll motion. I'll read. I'll motion to approve Mayor Johnson to sign into a five-year service agreement with Stryker for the preventative annual maintenance of the LifePack Cardiac Monitors and Stryker Power Load Cotton Lift Systems as attached in the amount of $30,999.23 per year.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Johnson, I'm so sorry. I think we may need to go back to an item, or at least I have a question. And Bill can tell me how we go back to the NEMA item because I think we need a motion to actually approve the expenditure for this year. And then we receive and file to put it in the budget for 2020 for the next fiscal year.
Great point. Separate motion from what was already made?
Yes. Can we go? Can we do that, Bill? Go back?
Somebody should make a motion to reconsider. Since it's in the same meeting, you can go back, but it's got to be somebody who voted for it. But since it was 5-0, then anybody can make it.
So I will make a motion to reconsider the NEMA report for receive and file.
Second. Got her.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was a motion to reconsider the expense. I move that we approve the expense of $5,000 toward the annual recycling base as presented. Second.
Thank you. And that's a decision. Okay.
I'm just trying to remember to say second.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
This is Mayor. I move that we adjourn to closed session to discuss an update on water sewer leak.
Second.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuk?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, you should have seen us at the land bank.
This conference will now be recorded.
Here we're back in open session. Motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Ha, beat ya. Your turn.
Should have said that.
The third.